The time is now 5:00 p.m. and I call this administrative meeting of the City Council of Ozark to order. If you haven't done so, you'll please sign in in the back and you will silence yourself at this time. Thank you. Our first order of business this evening is to have a public hearing to declare certain properties a public nuisance. So at this time, I call this public hearing open. Is there anyone present that would like to speak for or against 694 Dees Road being declared a public nuisance? 694 Dees Road. At this time, I will call this meeting to a close. And at this time, I will open the public hearing to declare 1394 South Union Avenue open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against 1394 South Union Avenue being declared a public nuisance? 1394 South Union Avenue. I call this public meeting to a close. At this time, we will review the agenda for the 5:30 p.m. meeting. After a call to order and a prayer and a pledge of allegiance, we will review the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on August 5th, 2025. Council members, have you had a chance to review those minutes? We got any comments or questions on them? Item number four is setting the agenda. Item number five is a resolution declaring certain properties a public nuisance. There were ones that we just had the public meeting for, so do we have anything to say about those?
There had been that property over a month.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions about either one of those properties?
No.
Thank you. All right. Item number six is the approval of the fiscal year 2026 budget.
Yes, I need approval.
Council members, do you have any questions for Chris regarding that budget?
I think that the mayor or city clerk alone with all department heads has done a fine job when I come in.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Item number seven is the approval of the renewal for discovery recovery contract with Avenue.
Okay. So Avenue also, not only do they collect our sales tax for us, they also assist in the collection of any business license that's outstanding that hasn't been collected. And that's what this is, is a renewal of the contract that we've had with them for years and years, long before I even got here. And so I'm just making a recommendation that we continue with that agreement.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions regarding the renewal of the Avenue contract?
No.
Item number eight is to approve a special city council meeting for September 2nd at 12:00 p.m. to canvass the vote from the August 2026, the initial election. Chris?
Yeah, so per the league municipalities' calendar and the state vote of Alabama, we are to commence at noon on the first Tuesday after the election so that the council can canvas the election results.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any comments or questions on?
I've got one. You know, the next item is number eight. Can we just move our whole regular council meeting to that time? That way we don't have to come back twice that day and just get it over with once smooth for everybody?
That is strictly up to y'all. Y'all have that capability of being able to declare at this time that you would like to go ahead and canvas the votes and have the normal city council meeting at 12 o'clock on September the 2nd.
I have some concerns about that because the citizens, they deem our council meetings to be at 5:00 p.m. on the first and third Tuesday. And so you might take away from someone that would want to attend a council meeting on that particular day. So I don't want to disservice the citizens.
Yeah, I would either, but it's known ahead of time.
That's making it more convenient for us and only, and I wouldn't put 14,500 citizens ahead of us.
I would never either.
Right, right, right. But I just feel it necessary to maintain the council meeting at that time.
I understand.
Okay. Council members, so you do know it is possible. So item number eight is just to approve that special city council meeting. And then if at the time, if someone wants to make that motion, then it would just have to be voted upon at that time. All right. Item number nine is to request a public hearing on September 2nd, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. for consideration of the revocation of the business license for Namaste Hospitality Doing Business as the Choice Inn.
So we have documentation that the Namaste Hospitality LLC has provided to y'all, has articles of cancellation. And so we're just asking for a public hearing to discuss that at the next city council meeting, whenever that is. Y'all decide y'all are going to do it.
Council members, do you have any questions for Chris on that topic? Item number 10 is a first reading application, 010, for Lounge Retail Liquor for the applicant The Spot to Be LLC, trade name The Spot to Be, at 1394 U.S. Highway 231, Suite 9. Would you like to speak on that for us?
Yes. A little bit of correction. Due to that location already having a previous liquor license under the name of Donahue's, we're actually having to go ahead with the first and second reading of that location.
Y'all are comfortable going on first and second? Okay. So council members, do you have any questions for Deputy Chief there for proceeding with a first and second reading for this location?
Does he say it's okay?
It's a question.
I have an objection.
Thank you. And then item number 11 is the unbudgeted purchase request for the police department for pistols and bulletproof vests.
I want to preface the justification for this. The proposed expenditure will not have an effect on our current operating budget. All the funding for these two purchases will come from the forfeiture condemnation that we received in the amount of $75,000 from the guns that we seized approximately a year ago that we seized those. That's where this can be utilized. To give a little more insight as to the objective we have is to replace our current firearms that has cumulative, that's kept them out of use through quarterly training, qualifications, as well as they're approximately 10 years old. So you're talking over $10,000 around each firearm that's been utilized and then we'll have to set it replaces this time. The second expenditure that we have is for our bulletproof vests, which are starting to wear and are in the cusp of being ummed and spied. So that's another reason. Both of these expenditures will be covered under this.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any comments or questions on that?
I'll give it to Chief.
Yes.
So we're going to utilize the same thing. We also have rifles that can be updated as well. And so that will be our next step is to do the same procedure with these firearms to get an authorized gun dealer to sell those and incorporate more long rifles in our arsenal that are as well, that is, the business is possibly have to come first that we need to replace. And then we'll kind of utilize those proceeds to the purchase of our, excuse me, long guns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12 and item number 13 are reappointments to boards. Item number 12 is the reappointment of Derek Dickens to the ODEC board. Council members, do you have any, I was going to say comments or questions, but Mayor, would you like to speak on both of these?
Derek is currently serving as chairman of the board and does a great job and would like to stay on. Of course, we'd like for him to. And Perry Pritchett on the tree board, he would also like to stay on.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions for the mayor on items 12 or 13?
No.
Okay. So with that, I will go out into the audience. Are there any departments in attendance that have any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening? Is there anyone in attendance that has any questions about the agenda items this evening? Is there anyone in attendance that has any comments or questions on any subject in particular? So at this time, I will go to final comments. Mayor?
Okay. First of all, we were going to put this on a projector and our bulbs flubbed, so we couldn't do that. I went out Monday and took 11 pictures on the sports complex and just kind of gives you an idea of what it's looking like. And when you see those larger trees there, we've kind of asked them to work around those till we get the land laid out and we can come back and take out what we need to. If you get a chance, if the chains down, you welcome to ride out there and ride through it. I took my FJ two-wheel drive, drove all over it. It's looking extremely good, very dry. We don't have any, you know, bud issues out there at all right now, but go out and look at it and get a chance. Tomorrow, Vernon Johnson and Holly and myself are meeting with Dr. Hearsink's team in Dothan to look at some possible opportunities where they're interested in helping us do some things here in Ozark. So some really good opportunities there. Hopefully, come out of that meeting. Follow back up with Dale. At our last meeting that we had with them, they expressed interest in getting a building downtown that uses an office space to where they could get involved in the community and be, have like a conference area. We are working with them on a building downtown and hopefully that's going to work out. The tennis court project is moving along very well. It looks really good over there. It seems to be doing well. The, if you go to the industrial park next to the old Van Hughesville building, all the way at the end of that cul-de-sac and just go straight out into it, you'll start seeing some clear. They started on it today. Y'all didn't have to approve that because that's ODEC property. ODEC went out, that was one of our growing Alabama grants that we got, and we partnered up, Chris, that one's Alabama Power, I believe it was. I thought it was Peter.
It's Peter, I think it's Peter Recker.
I think the other one's Peter Recker, this one's Alabama. Anyway, doesn't matter. But anyway, we're starting to clear that and it was just so thick in there. We've had several people look at it, you couldn't even walk through it. So they're starting to clear that and so it'll be, it's basically a culprit, they cleared in grass. So they'll put seed down and it'll just show a lot better being able to do that. If y'all did not know it, we got two different companies building tiny homes around here. You might have seen the one that was on display out at the car wash over the weekend. That one's being manufactured out of category 50, but they're really unique trailer mounted type homes. But there's another group that's building them down here across from Road Park in that building there. A little bit different concept, but hopefully we'll be able to get some information up and share that with y'all later on. The Wallace College and Hospital Project that we've been talking about for the training that they're going to be doing, teaching nurses and other medical professionals on the hospital grounds, that work actually started today. We did have a pretty bad house fire on Belcher today. The house still looked pretty good, but the three people had been displaced, so just wanted to let y'all know that. And they built a little bit of a lull in the building on the villages up on 123, but they have sold one of the houses and they're starting back to work out there. So hopefully we can keep that momentum going out there. But that's all I have.
Mayor, I have a question because I did see the tiny home thing. Has anybody looked to see if, I think it was last term, we tightened up on the regulations of what you can have within the city limits so that people weren't doing the storage container homes?
That.
Can we check and make sure that these that we're trying to market aren't actually getting their own policy or if we need to change our policy? Like just?
Well, I know we have a tiny home ordinance, but Brett's going to need to, we're going to need to look at that.
I thought we were both up. They just don't work the same.
Okay.
They all know that. They all got a lot of opposite goals. Play with that too.
Thank you. That was, that was the only way I had to play that, forgot about it until you even took it. Thank you. All right. Councilman Edfinger?
Just announcing the play they're going to have over at the Flower Center. It's going to be about the Eagles stadium. You know, we had the minor league baseball team came here and the people that get affected and some of the people stayed here and had businesses and had families along here. It's going to be all about them. I think it's 26, 26th of September.
13.
13.
I was like, it's mid-September.
It's two weeks late.
Yes.
I should know, my wife, I mean, my daughter and granddaughter, I should have. But anyway, just trying to come out.
Half or all of the baseball teams in it too?
Yeah, the baseball team has been in the margin twisted some arms. I'm talking, get on board, come be in there. Face on me real nice, be sudden. You're about to come out and support, appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Yes, just want to remind everyone that the deadline to have your absentee ballot in is on the 20th, which is tomorrow. Is that correct, Chris?
No. The deadline to have your application turned in by mail is today. You can actually hand deliver your application on the 21st. That'll be the last day that we'll take hand-delivered applications in order to go ahead and do the voting by absentee.
Okay. Thank you. If you want to clarify that.
No problem.
And what are we up to, Chris?
Right under 100. I think it was 97.
Thank you. Councilman Pearl?
I was just talking about Friday night, Carroll opens up their football season at home against Russell County, seven o'clock kickoff. Come out and see the new stadium, all the upgrades, the press box, the section area, the bathrooms, it is so nice up there. Y'all haven't been by there to see it. You drive by at night, there was this huge Carroll Eagle logo on the back of the press box lit up at nighttime. It looked so good. So y'all come out, support Eagles Friday night against Russell County. And I'll say, I'll say, yeah.
Let me add something to that. Talked to Superintendent this afternoon. He's planning on doing something at this game with all the school employees. Where they can go through and see everything, all the.
Hospitality.
Yeah, hospitality also. But then he wants to, we're trying to work out how we can make it work for city employees at the next home game. So, you know, school folks have got badges, but we don't have badges. Where they can get in the gate and be able to go through and tour. Y'all be thinking about that way I'll work it out some.
That's going to be awesome.
I understand that the first five names are home.
There's five around.
Five, Fridays and a Rose.
Yep.
I mean, so that the community can actually just be here.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Councilwoman Harlow?
Yeah, we have the community pep rally Thursday, correct?
It's at 6:00. Eagle Stadium, the baseball stadium.
Yeah. And so encourage everybody to come out and support our Eagles this Thursday, 6:00. And one thing about the play that Councilman Edfinger mentioned that's in September, that was written by one of our Carroll High Eagles, Joshua Harding, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And is he graduated yet? Do you know?
Yes.
He's either a senior or he's about to be a senior.
I'm sure.
Anyway, regardless, he's one of our, so it'd be really neat to, you know, to go and to support him and as well as the Flower Center's efforts to teach us about what minor league baseball meant to Ozark once upon a time.
Thank you. That's all. My only comment is August 26th is the day, so one week from today, please go out and vote. Please go out and vote. And if you don't think you can, one more day for absentee, or two more days. Two more days, two more days for absentee ballot hunting.
I got another thing. I challenge the city of Ozark citizens to get out, vote, beat Dothan's percentage of just under 16. Let's see if Ozark can get a higher percentage of voters in this election here. So hashtag beat Dothan.
I know, I've seen a lot of these faces and y'all are the active people and we appreciate you being, get your friends and neighbors to vote as well. Because it's, it's one of the things that saddens me is that everyone gets really active right now. And then in about a month, it will disappear and this will be just a room of the people up in the front and then the department heads and maybe like one other person. So please continuously stay involved and continuously stay involved. That's, that's what I wish for everything for us. Continuously stay involved and also know your neighbors, help your neighbors. If you know each other, speak to each other. That's how everything is going to get better and stay good in Ozark. That's my soapbox for this evening. All right. At this time, I'll call this meeting to a close and we'll begin the next meeting in three minutes. Call this meeting of the City Council of Ozark to order. We will begin this evening with a prayer led by Councilwoman Harlow and the pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Blankenship.
Father God, thank you for this day, dear Lord. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you with the needs of the city, dear Lord, and us as public servants to be able to address those needs and concerns to the best of our abilities and according to your will for the city and for our, and for us. I pray that you be with the weak and the sick tonight and those that are recently homeless with the fire. I just pray that you look after them and provide them with, and meet their needs. Please be with us as we continue to do the work of the city. And I ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will review the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on August 5th, 2025. Council members, what are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we approve the minutes from August 5th meeting.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on approving these minutes as presented? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is to set the agenda for this evening. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I can motion to set the agenda as presented and the order is adopted.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Do we have to add a second? Like that is a second reading? The wording?
Yeah.
Would you like to?
I'll amend that and add in the first and second reading.
No, no, you don't have to add that.
I don't, okay.
The agenda is set.
Okay.
It's just when it comes time to add.
Oh, we have to change the wording. Okay. Then I second.
Okay. Thank you. I have, with motion a second. Do we have any discussion on accepting the agenda as presented? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five is a resolution declaring certain properties a public nuisance. Those properties are 694 Dees Road and 1394 South Union Avenue. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I'll introduce a resolution declaring certain properties a public nuisance at 694 Dees Road and 1394 South Union Avenue and move this adopted.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this resolution? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is the approval of the FY 2026 budget. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we approve the fiscal year 2026 budget. I move this approved.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on approving this budget? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is an approval for the renewal of the discovery recovery contract with Avenue. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I can make a motion for approval of the renewal for discovery recovery contract with Avenue and move for adoption.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on approving, approving the renewal of this contract? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is to approve a special city council meeting for September 2nd, 2025, at 12:00 p.m. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move to approve a special city council meeting for September 2nd, 2025, at 12:00 p.m. to canvass the vote from August 26, 2025, and that's the election.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on approving this special city council meeting? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine is a request for a public hearing on September 2nd, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we have a public hearing on September the 2nd, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. for consideration of the revocation of the business license for Namaste Hospitality LLC Doing Business as Choice Inn.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm writing my notes. Do we have any discussion on setting this public hearing? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 10 is a first and second reading application for applicant The Spot to Be. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we approve a first and second reading application, 010, Lounge Retail Liquor Class 1, applicant D.A. Spot to Be LLC Trade Name, D.A. Spot to Be, 1394 U.S. Highway 231, Suite 9.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on accepting this first and second reading application? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is a purchase request for police department pistols and bulletproof vests. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we allow the purchase of police department pistols and bulletproof vests.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this item? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is a board reappointment for the ODEC board. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we reappoint Derek Dickens to the board. Move for approval.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on reappointing Mr. Dickens to the ODEC board? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 13 is a board appointment for the tree board. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we reappoint Mr. Perry Pritchett to the tree board.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion for this reappointment? What are the wishes of the council? Oh, what are the wishes of the council? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 14 and item number 15, there was a court report, a financial report in your packet. So with no further business, we'll go to final comments. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Councilman Edfinger?
Right.
Councilman Jackson? Councilman Jackson?
I'd just like to commend Ryan Campbell and his department, Wildgrass Construction, has been on campground road for several days backing up the traffic for a good reason. That road is probably just under four miles long, so we're still out there, but they're doing a fine job repaving it.
Yes, yes. Thank you, thank you. And thank you to our public works department and Wildgrass Construction for getting that, for getting that done. Councilwoman Pearl?
Just come out to Carroll football game right now, see the band too.
Councilwoman Harlow?
I don't have anything.
All right. Go vote, one week from today. Go vote, go vote. Tell everyone, go vote. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, do we have any discussion on adjournment? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Call this meeting to a close.